Welcome to the 2023 Annual Town Meeting. I am your moderator, Jason Tallerman. I am now hereby opening the meeting and calling it to order. I declare that the warrant has been duly posted and published and that the reading of the warrant is hereby waived. If we could stand for Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. As is our custom and tradition, we take this time at town meeting to honor those who have passed since last year who have given service to the town. Charles Scott Thayer, Stephen G. McLean, Philip Day Lucans, Frederick Arthur Woody Woodworth Jr., Bruce E. Hamlin, J. David Kennedy, Peter Hildy Hildebrandt, Linda Joan Candela, Barbara Bartholomew, and Scott Dietrich. If we, I apologize for any pronunciations and any one we missed. May we have a moment of silence, please? Thank you. So I want to introduce some of the players for the evening. To my left is Carol Green, our Town Clerk, Rebecca Teft, our Assistant Town Clerk. We have the Select Board next, Jim Leehan, welcome back, Jim, Anita Mecklenburg, and Kevin Calcutt, Todd Linmark, our Finance Director, Justin Casanova Davis, our Town Administrator, Tom Harrington, our Town Council, and Kate O'Brien, sitting in the, in the front row, our Assistant Town Administrator. Okay. Some rules for town meeting, for those that have not sat in with us before. We're governed by town meeting time, which is a treatise on parliamentary procedure and local bylaws. I'll explain procedures as needed for anyone that doesn't understand what's going on on the floor, so please raise a point of order if you don't understand what is being moved or what other action town meeting is taking. Motions will generally be made by the Advisory Board, which is directly in front of me, David Lutz, Chairperson of the Advisory Board. Sometimes you will hear a motion for indefinite postponement. That's essentially a motion to dismiss or kill a particular article, either because there is no interest in it moving forward, or it's moot or irrelevant. Those who will make the motions will generally have first opportunity to explain. We will also have some zoning articles tonight where we will have the Planning Board make some explanation as well. Motions to amend generally must be in writing, provided that for a ministerial clerical correction, I will accept a friendly amendment. And we will always help with procedure between myself and Carol and Rebecca. We should be able to get you where you need to go. We're going to be going in order on the warrant today with the exception of Article 30, which was previously last on the warrant. We, I have moved that up to art, between Article 13 and 14. We're gonna, I hope we have some good debate tonight. I'm gonna try and balance discussion as well as I can. Everyone's gonna have a chance to speak on a matter, but at a certain point, I will try and avoid repetition and move things along. You have a maximum of five minutes to the first time to the mic, three minutes for a second time to the mic, but don't be surprised if I hurry you along if things are kind of getting repetitive. I may allow someone with new information to speak a third time, but by bylaw, I may limit a speaker to two times at the microphone. All comments and questions come through the moderator. They just come up to a mic if you have a question or a comment on an article, and you will be recognized. I do request that people give their name and address, address at least the first time that they speak. I hope that we can have a spirited debate tonight and that, that this meeting does have some issues that will be debated, and I hope people are civil in their comments and that there are no personal comments. Everything should be respectful. I want to hear facts and opinions. What I don't want to hear is what you think someone else's opinion is. We have a number of local officials, and between myself and the local officials, we'll try and get any questions answered. When it comes to voting, I will ask for a voice vote. Please, no shouting, it doesn't help. If I cannot discern the result, I may ask for a show of hands. If I still can't discern whether, what the vote is, I may have the vote counted by tellers. I do respect a call of the question, which is that anyone from the floor can, if they think debate has gone on long enough, can arise and say, I call the question. And we would have a two-thirds vote to see if that's the case. However, if someone's lined up at the microphone, or I feel that there's still some meat left on the bone in terms of the debate of town meeting, I am going to allow the debate to continue. That said, I think we can do business in an expedient way and be done tonight, if not perhaps by halftime of the Celtics game. There's a number of handouts out front. There was a number of, there was a lot of information online as well. If you want to step out and grab the handouts, if you didn't get them, then they are there. There will also be a lot of the same information on the screen here, which will try and follow us along. Okay. With that, we proceed directly to Article Two, which is unpaid bills.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town appropriate funds to pay the unpaid prior-year bills as displayed on the screen.
Is there a second? Someone's gonna have to speak up with that second, Brian. You're not usually this quiet. Explanation, Mr. Lutz.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. There's one bill, as you can see here, for $7,215. It actually represents an old bill that came due as a result of an ultimately insurance settlement. I can take any questions, or I can defer to folks on the town.
Thank you. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns with respect to unpaid bills? This requires a four-fifths vote. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Article Three is current fiscal year transfers. Mr. Lutz. Will we wait for the screen to catch up? There we go.
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve the transfers that displayed on the screen.
It's been moved in seconded. Mr. Lutz.
Mr. Moderator, this is a standard budget practice to move funds that are available to sources or to areas in the budget that need a small amount of extra money to get through the end of the fiscal year.
Thank you. Any questions, concerns, comments on Article Three? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? It passes unanimously. Article Four, Funding for Collective Bargaining Agreements. Mr. Garrity.
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article Four as printed in the warrant.
And are we, are we gonna be showing warrant articles in, as the? Great, thank you.
So you'll see from your, your handouts that Article Four is a article that is required to approve collective bargaining agreements by town meeting. This article pertains to the approval of the contract between the town and local 4134, the International Association of Firefighters, which was this last December. Contract provides for the implementation of a step system, a wage scale increase of 1.5%, an increase in the clothing allowance, adding the new Juneteenth state holiday, and the implementation of a drug and alcohol testing policy, among other provisions. The Advisory Board unanimously approved this article.
Thank you, Mr. Garrity. Any questions, comments, concerns on Article Four? Seeing none, requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no? It passes unanimously. Article Five is the annual compensation schedule. Mr. Garrity.
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article Five as printed in the warrant.
Been moved in seconded. Mr. Garrity.
This article is the annual compensation schedule. It includes a 1.5% cost of living increase for town employees who are not covered by a union contract. This proposed increase is aligned with the increases in union employees, and parity in COLAs between union and non-union employees is consistent with how the town has approached this issue.
Thank you, Mr. Garrity. Any questions, comments, concerns on Article Five? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? It passes unanimously. Article Six is the Omnibus Operating Budget. Before we get started, let me just let everyone know how we're going to do this. There is a, I believe there's a, there was a handout with the budget out front?
Yes.
Yeah. So that will help you as we go through this, the budget. What we're gonna do is have Mr. Lutz read the, read the motion, have a second and a quick summary by the Advisory Board, and then we're going to have a presentation. Justin, will you be doing, who's doing that? Are you doing a presentation?
I'll do the town presentation.
And then we have both King Philip and Norfolk Public Schools, if they want to give a presentation as well. After those presentations, what I will do is read the line items that is on really the first substantive page of the handout that's before you, that has one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine line items, and if people want to discuss them, they can. The detailed pages that follow that are to help assist in letting you know what's in the budget, but the line items we're going to be voting on are those ones on that first substantive page. And if this is confusing to anyone at all, I'll be happy to explain it. Mr. Lutz.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town fix the salary and compensation of the elected position of Town Clerk at $88,171.28, as provided for by the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 41, Section 108, for the fiscal year commencing on July 1st, 2023. And further, to raise and appropriate the $50,232,583 to defray the department and incidental expenses of the town, not otherwise provided for the fiscal year commencing on July 1st, 2023.
It's been moved in seconded. Mr. Lutz.
This is the general operating budget, as Mr. Tallerman just explained. You will be hearing longer presentations from both the town and the, and the two schools' departments. We had a number of discussions with the town and the schools on this. We've expressed some concerns about, there's a, there's a use of some, a small use of one-time-only expense, or to cover, one-time-only funds to cover some of the expenses, but at this point, we feel it's an appropriate use of those funds, and the committee voted unanimously in favor of this budget.
Thank you. Justin, if you have a presentation and want to go through it, that's fine.
Good evening, everyone. Justin Casanova Davis, Town Administrator. It's good to see you all here at town meeting. We'll just go through the town budget here. The first slide, this was the first, last year we presented this slide, gives you an indication of how the financial landscape has changed this year. So in fiscal year 23, our local receipts did increase. Pandemic costs are declining, we're seeing a little bit more flexibility in the supply chain, but there still are some challenges. State aid has stabilized, and tax collections are in track. For fiscal year 24, local receipts are still on track to sort of get a slight increase, so we are seeing some growth from the pandemic. Pandemic costs are negligible, they're diminished, I think they are what they are, that's what our department heads and our supply chain partners have really indicated to us. State aid has increased on the proposed budget from the governor, as well as houseways and means in the Senate proposed. And tax collections are on track for fiscal year 24. Next slide is how are we doing this year? So revenues this year are strong, so far. Tax receipts are about 4.7% above fiscal year 23, as of March 31st. Budgeted revenues are on track. Investment income is doing significantly better than what we had budgeted, which is about $26,000 at March 31st. And expenses are slightly below budget, we're at 74% as of March 31st. Departmental expenses are trending favorably, we have probably realized some savings at the end of the fiscal year there, and our retirement expenses and debt obligations are funded. Next slide is our fiscal year 24 budget priorities. So in this budget, we fund our education budgets to meet each, our district's requirements. We fulfill our town's contractual obligations. We're attempting, as Mr. Lutz had said, we are using, utilizing some one-time sources of fund because of some budgetary challenges that we'll identify in this slide in this budget, but we are attempting to limit our reliance on free cash. In this budget, we'll be using, utilizing $944,000 in ARPA funds and $159,000 in free cash. The overall operating budget is an increase of 6%. The fiscal year 24 budget, our recommended budget, this is a slide that is in the backup document that Jay had mentioned there. These are the lines that I guess we'll discuss further, but we just put this in the slide there for you all. Represents a 6.6% increase in the budget because it does reflect exempt debt. The next slide is our revenue, and so this indicates our tax base is a two-and-a-half percent growth with a two-and-a-half percent increase, along with new growth. We see some increase in local receipts, we see an increase in state aid, and we also identify the usage of free cash and ARPA funds that we're utilizing for revenue. Our revenue is increasing about 5.7% this fiscal year 24 budget. The next slide is state aid, and you see in fiscal year 24, Chapter 70, school aid has increased, and these, these numbers are utilizing the governor's proposed budget. There is no, the consolidated budget hasn't been agreed to yet, so we're utilizing the governor's budget for our budget. So Chapter 70, school aid is increasing, Charter, school tuition is increasing, and so we're seeing about a 4.7% increase in state aid. Revenue highlights, we have the two-and-a-half percent plus new growth, the ARPA funds of $944,000. $200,000 of those funds are being utilized to fund stormwater compliance. $744,000 is being utilized to balance our operating budget. Prison mitigation funds, we are reducing that by $100,000 because this fiscal year, the town received less funds in prison mitigation. We are actively working with the legislature to see if we can get an increase in those funds. Building permit revenue has increased by $25,000 again. We're seeing a good collections rate this year, and we anticipate in fiscal year 24, we'll see that as well. So some of the expenditure highlights, this budget is a challenging budget for the town this year. So this year, there are no new positions in the fiscal year 24 budget, and in order to achieve a balanced budget, we had to freeze some positions that were budgeted in fiscal year 23, that we are proposing fiscal year 24 not to, to fund. So in the building department, there's an executive assistant position. The assistant building commissioner position was previously full-time, it's gonna be full-time for fiscal year 24. In DPW, we are not filling the highway and grounds position. In facilities, we're not filling HVAC position. In the fire department, upon retirement and our planned promotion within the department, we'll freeze a firefighter position that will likely open based on the promotion from within. As well, in the library, where our children's librarian position is being frozen. A lot of these, a lot of the challenging aspects of the budget this year were generated from our fixed costs. Fixed costs, there's no capability to change those numbers. So some of those highlights, our schools' assessments, our King Philip assessment increased by 11.2%. Our tri-county assessment increased by 22.5%. Our Norfolk County retirement assessment increased by 11.4%. The health insurance rates increased by 10.5%. The Medicomite emergency assessment increased by 135%. That's reflected because the town has been receiving a grant that has covered a portion of that. This fiscal year 24 will be the final year of that 25% coverage of that grant. And the debt, non-exempt debt is increasing by 1.2%, and exempt debt, which is increasing by 16.5%, that's largely being driven by the fire station ban project that we recently went out for. Finally, the year ahead, for fiscal year 24 and moving forward, we'll continue to review the state adopted budget, we'll advocate for additional state aid. We need as much state aid as possible to help us with our budgetary challenges. We'll continue to monitor and review revenue expenditures to ensure we are, we remain on track. At the fall town meeting, we'll propose a capital improvement project. Typically, what we focused on is investments in roads, you know, building repairs, vehicle replacements and so forth. This year, we'll be looking at a fire apparatus as well, potentially. At fall town meeting, we will propose further budget transfers to strengthen our town's financial position. I am proud to say that the town recently had our bond rating done by S&amp;P Global, and we were rated as AA+ , which is the second highest rating that the town could get, so that does realize savings for residents on, on their tax bills with a higher rating. We'll partner with the UMass Call-In Center to implement a forecast. So moving forward, the town and residents will be able to see what our projected forecasts are in terms of revenue and expenditures moving forward. And then finally, we'll work on completion of the integration with ClearGov modules so we can develop a budget book in CIP, which will allow us to provide more information to residents and be more transparent about the budget process in the town. That is my presentation.
Thank you. Okay. So we can flip a coin and see if, all right, we're gonna have Norfolk Public Schools first.
So good evening, and thank you for giving us the opportunity to share some information tonight about the Norfolk Public Schools 2024 budget request. I'm Ingrid Alardi, I'm the Superintendent of Schools, and this is Barry Metow, our District Business Consultant. Hopefully I got things right. Can I go back a slide? Hold on a second, I gotta figure this out. There we go. All right. So on the screen, you can see the District Vision and Mission Statement. We share those because they're the driving force of our budget separation. When we are developing our budget, we are really conscious about trying to make decisions that are in the best interest of our students and that promote strong learning and achievement. When we're thinking about the budget going forward, I think it's really important to look about the long-term budget history. Every year when we, thank you, every year when we build a budget, just to move our staff forward, absorb the cost of salary increases, increases in the expense lines, contracts we have with outside vendors, it typically takes about 3%. When you look at the budget history over a series of years, you can see, like everybody in the Commonwealth, the years of 2008 to 2013 were really difficult. There was very low revenue, so during those years, the schools had significant cuts to program staffing and expenses. In the last 10 years, the Norfolk Public Schools and the town have been in a much better financial position and have been able to fund our budget at higher rates. But if you look over the average of that period of time, you'll see that our average budget increase was 2.94%, so just under the 3%. So we're holding our own, but it has been very difficult to rebuild from the cuts that we experienced. At the same time, enrollment in the Norfolk Public Schools is steadily growing. This is something everybody's aware of, we've been talking about the space crunch that we have in our schools for a number of years now. Over, from 2018, 19 year to the, the projected enrollment for the fall, we have increased by 100 students, so it's been about 20 students a year. You'll see that during 21, 22, we, between 21, 22 and 22, 23, we experienced a slight dip in enrollment that was unexpected. We, our projections were looking stronger. We are in the process of analyzing that, but that looks to be probably a direct result of the pandemic, where construction timelines slowed down, real estate market slowed down, we didn't see as many houses turnover, so we are investigating that, but you can see from 2022, 23, to the projected enrollment for the fall, we're up by over 40 students, so we're back on that enrollment growth trend. With the growing enrollment comes additional costs. As we're bringing more students into the school, we have had to add additional classroom teachers, we have increased our specialists, so art, music, physical education, to add programming for the new students arriving. We've had to increase our special education staff, our programs in special education are growing parallel to our overall enrollment growth, and we've had to increase general education supports, cafeteria staff, all of those supplementary positions that support our students as they navigate their educational experience. A challenge that we had going into the coming school year is our budget has always been supported by some additional federal funding through states, through federal entitlement grants. So we have historically received funding through the Title I program and through Title II-A. That funding that comes directly to us, the allocations are based, have always been based on local data for free and reduced lunch, and that is how economic need has been measured. During the pandemic, lunch was free for all students, so the federal government was not gathering or reviewing that data, and they shifted the formula to rely on the federal census. While our local data shows that over the past three years, economic need has grown significantly in Norfolk, we've gone from about 4.6% to about 7.2% of our students experiencing economic hardship and economic need, the federal census data does not align with that. It is underreporting the economic need in Norfolk, and as a result, we've lost both Title I and Title II funding. That's about $40,000 going into each, each new school year. Just for comparison, we have a series of districts that the Department of Education identifies through their DART analysis systems that are like communities. We use them as benchmarks for our academic progress, financial spending, and many other data points that we, we look at regularly to evaluate performance. In terms of per pupil spending, you can see with regard to all of the comparison communities, Norfolk falls at the bottom of per pupil spending with Berkeley pretty consistently. These are all K to six or K to eight districts, so they do not have the high school or middle school, which has additional expenses for athletic teams, after-school programs, so these are all K six to K eight. Norfolk is slightly under the state average, actually, this year, the gap is a little bit larger. The state average is about $19,000. You can see all of the districts shaded in green, although they are, elementary districts do spend above the state average. There are some additional budget drivers as we're planning and going into the next fiscal year. Across the Commonwealth and across the nation, we have seen significant increases in students' mental health and emotional health needs, increases in depression, anxiety, and a variety of other behavioral health and emotional conditions. This is not only related to the pandemic. We've been concerned about this growing trend since 2008. There are greater wait lists for counselors, for families to access outside care. If you can see in the bullet points, Massachusetts actually ranks higher in depression and anxiety in youth than most other states across the country. And again, I think what's really critical is that most students, the school are the only place that they can access this care. Over 70% of students, the only care they get is through the schools. So we have added mental health physicians over the past few years that we really need to sustain in order to really meet the needs of the children that we're serving. I'm gonna turn it over to Barry, he's gonna walk through some of the numbers.
I'll hold up. That's good. Thank you. Good evening. Our budget proposal for FY '24 is a budget of $15,674.7. That's a 4.28% increase, or just a little over $618,000 over the current fiscal year. And our Budget Subcommittee and School Committee worked hard during budget season to prepare a budget that's fiscally conservative and allows the district to continue to provide strong educational programs that meets the needs of all the students we serve. So this request allows the district to maintain close-to-level services. It also allows us to meet all of our contractual obligations, and that's really salaries and transportation. It allows us to increase funding for special education programs, mainly transportation and out-of-district tuitions. It allows us to maintain a .2 of our regional wellness director position that we share with the local, other districts. And it allows us to fund a .5 mass specialist position that's currently funded in our COVID grant that ends this year, so we'll point that position into our operating budget, and that's to continue to address some learning loss that we had during COVID. It allows us to provide appropriate levels of mental health staffing, and allows, and also allows us to add a paraprofessional in kindergarten, because we're adding a section of kindergarten next year. a section of kindergarten next year based on our enrollment projection. Thank you. A breakdown of the increase by percentages, so the total percentage increase is 4.28%. 3.14% of it is really salary and transportation. So those are basically fixed, fixed costs. The .16 increase based on COVID recovery is the math specialist that I mentioned. .7% of the 4.28% is for increases in special education costs. .38% is the para for kindergarten, the kindergarten classroom, so that's enrollment-based. And then we have a slight reduction in all other areas of the budget, and that's the 4.28% increase. Lastly, I look at the budget in a slightly different way, which is sort of fixed versus variable costs. And if you think about fixed costs for us, we think about salaries, transportation, out-of-district tuition, and utilities. And that's about 95% of our budget. So that leaves us 5% to allocate towards variable or discretionary spending. So that's curriculum, textbooks, general classroom supplies, paper, and all other expenses. So you can see we have very little, about $725,000 of non-fixed costs.
We've been asked at the advisory board and at Town Hall what our class size projections look like, so we do report that annually. Next year, we are anticipating class sizes ranging from 18 to 23, in some places, 22.6. Again, class size comparisons against the same series of districts shows that our class sizes are growing. Back in 2007 and 18, we had class sizes of 18. We're now averaging about 20, which puts us on the higher end of those comparison communities. I do think it's really important, we try to share out with the town, that the school has worked diligently with the town to share resources with our partner communities to find areas for cost savings. We will, we have shared for a number of years now a facilities director and deputy director with the town. We see an annual savings of about $20,000 by that partnership. We also have a shared custodial position that we stagger that works a different schedule Tuesday through Saturday. That's brought our budget for overtime down by about $5,000. We regionalized last year our school lunch program, so we now have a regional director that does all of our programming for our school lunch with Rantham and Plainville. That realizes an annual savings of about $15,000, and we do cost-share professional development with those communities as well. Special education tuitions, we have shared services with Rantham and Plainville, tuition students into Norfolk or our students into their districts at a significant cost savings, and also keeping students with their home community that they will go on to the King Philip Regional with. $43,000 we spent in savings there. Expanding in-house special education programs will save us about $130,000 next year. And then through competitive grant writing, we talked earlier about how we're retaining a .2 position for our regional wellness director. We share with KP, who will probably talk about her as well, but she brought in a significant amount of grant funding last year. That $43,000 is primarily our share of grants that Dot Pearl has written for the district, so it certainly offsets the cost of her salary. We expect about $280,000 total in savings for next year. I was hoping to be able to tell you tonight that we also were awarded the $100,000 school safety grant that we've written, but they are delaying that announcement, so I don't have that for you yet, but that is pending. Our budget is very conservative. We know that the town is experiencing financial hardship this year, so we weren't able to put everything in that we think are critical needs for the district. We will have high class sizes next year in third grade. We have classes of 22 and 23, which is higher. We would have typically added a third-grade teacher, but that cost is $68,000, and we don't have it. If we added an additional third grade, we'd also have to increase music, art, and physical education staffing to provide the special programs for those students. We've needed an additional special education team chair to lead our meetings and assessment process. We're delaying that. We have only two tech support people for over 2,000 users. We're very short in that line. They're running constantly, but we are delaying expanding that. You can see there are several other things that we would like to be able to bring forward that we are not able to do at this time, especially our English language arts curriculum is aging out. We, there's a lot of new research on the science of reading. We need to update that program. We have noticed a decline in our MCAS scores. We want to bring those back, but we have to delay the adoption of a new program because of costs at this point. That said, we still think the town is a very strong return on your investment. We have very skilled, highly qualified teachers in all of our classrooms. We are able to retain our teachers. We have a very high teacher retention rate. We do have competitive scores, although, as I mentioned, we're seeing a decline in ELA, and we want to be able to expand and bring engineering more into our science program to remain competitive. We do have outstanding arts education programs. We have physical education still twice a week for our students, and as I said, 90% of our teachers have advanced degrees, masters and beyond, and 58% have more than 10 years teaching experience. Happy to take any questions at the appropriate time when Jay says it's time for questions, so I will turn it to Paul to give an update on KP.
I'm going to take the mic off the stand because there's no way I can reach up to the heights that Dr. Alardi put forth for me. So good evening, everyone. I'm Paul Zinni. I'm your Superintendent of Schools for the KP Regional School District for 43 more days. It's been a pleasure being with you, and this is actually my last presentation for you with the budget. I do assure you that Dr. Rich Drole has been hired for the district. He's a seasoned superintendent, and you're in very good hands, and I know you'll enjoy meeting him next year. That being said, let's talk a little bit about the King Philip Regional budget. And quite honestly, as was mentioned earlier, when they talked about the total budget issues that the town was going through, you already heard about the elephant in the room, and this time it wasn't me. It certainly is the assessment this year. And so while there are so many things we could tell you about King Philip and the budget, most of our presentation tonight is really trying to give you a little bit more of an understanding of where we're at and what happened as far as the assessment goes. So with that being said, one of the things that we have to focus on as part of the assessment is enrollment. And so each year, we calculate the enrollment by grade from each of the three towns, and that gives us the percentage for each of those communities. So as you can see, and as Dr. Alardi made reference to, Norfolk's enrollment is going up. Plainville and Rantham's enrollment for the King Philip schools is going down. That's a significant factor in the calculations this year as far as the assessments go. That's going to have a significant impact. King Philip is its own municipality in many ways. Because we service three towns, we receive revenue to the school district directly. 25% of that revenue is through sources like these, state aid and such, and I'm going to break that down for you in just a minute. And the other 75% comes through the assessments of the three communities. When you heard our town manager speak earlier about state aid, and he talked about Education Chapter 70, he was speaking about the Chapter 70 dollars that come in for the elementary district. The Chapter 70 dollars that come in for King Philip come directly to King Philip. So when you look at Chapter 70, you're going to see that the Chapter 70 dollars went up by 1.5%. Transportation re, oops, I'm sorry. Transportation reimbursement is up a little bit more, 5.13%. Again, these figures are all based on the governor's projected budget, the same projections that the town has used. Charter school tuition reimbursement, you can see that's down considerably. So overall, what we're looking at from state aid is an increase of about 1.42%. Now remember, I said 25% of King Philip's revenue comes from the state. So 25% of our revenue only went up by 1.42%. To make our budget balanced, we're going to need the other 75% to go up even more than our total increase. Many have heard them talk about state aid, the Student Opportunity Act. We've heard about how much money the state is pumping into education, and they truly have pumped great deal of money into education, but the formula has not been an equitable one. And so I think it's really important for people to know that when they hear about this information out in the community. Basically, 71% of all new Chapter 70 aid is going to only 32 districts in the state. Almost 93% of all new Chapter 78 is going to only 106 districts in the state. And the remaining 212 districts, Norfolk and King Philip included, are sharing a combined total of 7% of the new Chapter 70 money. So in addition to state revenue, the district has a small amount of revenue that it contributes to that total budget allocation. Medicaid reimbursement, we work diligently to apply to the federal government to get reimbursed for services that we provide at a medical basis that we could then bill through Medicaid. This was not done prior to my arrival, and you can see over the last few years, it's reaped some significant benefit. This year, we're projecting an even higher increase, and so we're gambling and saying that we will have $150,000, although we haven't yet applied for that. So we're taking that chance. We're very fortunate that while the economy is problematic in some ways, interest rates for savings are going up. And because of that, we're able to invest KP's money in higher-yield revenue accounts, and therefore, the interest will be higher for this year, which we will then again apply to the budget. So overall, we're projecting an increase of our contributions of about $90,000. So here's what we have. I wish I could tell you that we were adding a number of positions. There are certainly a number of positions that we could be adding to the district. I wish we could tell you that we actually had a real level service budget, but in fact, we have three positions that we will not be able to fill next year. Fortunately, through attrition, no one will be laid off, but there are three positions as of right now we will not be able to fill. And that's because we tried to keep our budget to a smaller percentage because we recognized that yet again this year, one district was getting hit very hard through the assessment. If the assessments were smooth across the board and all three towns shared in them evenly, while it would be a burden to the communities, it would not be the same burden that it is in this particular case. The last few years, you'll see in the later slide, Plainville has taken the brunt of the increase. This year, unfortunately, it's Norfolk. So as you can see, state aid went up by 1.42%. The district revenue were increasing by 17.65%, but it's a very small sliver of the big pie. And then therefore, we need the member towns, the assessments to go up by 4.77% to give us the operating budget of 3.9. There's one additional thing I want to share with you about the 3.9% increase. We've seen some costs this year that have been very difficult for us to absorb, primarily in the area of special education. While very legitimate costs, we're receiving five new students entering the middle school coming from the three-feeder towns that have high tuitions and are already placed. They are absolutely appropriately replaced, they deserve the education that they are receiving, but these are five new tuitions that we did not have here. Additionally, the state regulates how much out-of-district placements can increase their tuitions annually. The average increase for tuitions for out-of-district placements has been 2%. This year, the state has authorized a 14% increase to out-of-district placement tuitions. That's staggering. Staggering for Norfolk, it's staggering for all of the other communities in Massachusetts. And we've met with our representatives and our senators, we've met as a superintendent organization to try to advocate for relief on this, but as of now, we're looking at a 14% increase in that state, the state tuition costs. Because of that, we are seeing an increase of $750,000 in special education costs. That's 1.75% of our budget. So when I tell you that our budget is going up by 3.9%, 1.75% of that is to absorb those new special education costs. So we basically created an operating budget that's 2.15%. And we did that out of respect for the community, knowing that the assessments were already so high, there is no way that the town could absorb a higher increase at this time. Again, for those who are looking at the assessments, you can see there are a few different things that we look at to calculate. It was a perfect storm this year. Everything went up for Norfolk, while the other communities had areas that went down, and that's what the assessments look like in total. We frequently get asked what the trends look like, and so we put this chart together for you so that you can see. The first budget that I presented to you was the 2019 budget. You can see that prior to that, you had a couple of very difficult King Philip budgets, but since I've been your superintendent, we've had a percentage increase somewhere between the high 2s and 3%. You can see, up until this year, Norfolk has actually been the big winner. Your assessments have not gone up dramatically, whereas you can see Plainville had a couple of very difficult years, and Rantham has had some high years as well. Unfortunately, this year, Norfolk was the one that got hit very hard. And as I said, 4.77%. If that was split evenly and each town was able to do that, we would be presenting to you a very different budget. But because of this wonkiness that happens with the formula, we have been trying for the last few years to be really respectful for that town that has gotten hit so hard. So with that being said, again, our overall increase, or ask, it's 3.9%. I will remind you that there are lots of great things going on in King Philip, and I hope that while the schools are not always in your community, you always think about King Philip as your schools. There's so much to be proud of. Our students are going to the top colleges. Considerably higher number of students are getting into college and going to college than the average across the state. Our AP scores are considerably higher than the state and the national average. We have award-winning musical productions, art shows, sports teams. You have so much to be proud of, and I feel blessed to have been part of the school district for the last five years. And so with that being said, I want to thank you all for your support. It has been a pleasure being your superintendent for the last five years, and I wish this community all the very best in the future.
Paul, I want to thank you on behalf of Norfolk for all you've done over the last few years. You will be missed at this town meeting and beyond. Thank you very much. Okay, so if we could get up on the screen, the general fund budget breakdown. Well, not, not very small, that, that, that works. Can we scroll a little bit on that, Joe? And if you want to just like downzoom maybe once so we can get it all on one.
If you go to the presentation, I think.
That actually works right there, I think. No, that's the enterprise. Perfect. Okay, this is in the handout as well that was available on the tables out front. I just wanted to have it on the screen. So here's what we're going to do. I'm going to read each of these line items. There's further details in the pages that follow in the handout, but these are the line items in your budget. If you have a question about any of these particular departments, as I read the line item, just yell out "hold," and we'll hold it for discussion purposes. If you have an amendment or want to discuss any part of any of these particular line items, you can only do the bottom line or talk about the bottom line for these. You can have a comment on any of the subgroups within these budgetary line items, but this town meeting is voted. town meeting is voting on these larger clumps of departmental budgets. So I'm going to go through these one at a time. So like, for example, under public safety, that encompasses obviously both police and fire. If you have a question about either police or fire, then that's the one that you would hold, and you can feel free to discuss, and we can go from there. So I'm going to read them now. So general government. Public safety. Hold on public safety. Education, that's all the schools. There was a hold on education? Human services. Culture and recreation. Benefits and insurance. Debt service. And exempt debt. Exempt debt has a hold. Okay. So those are the three items we're going to be discussing. Public safety, whoever had a hold, come on down to the mic, and let's hear what you have to say. Ed, it's good to see you.
Ed Hadad, one thirty-eight, Red Maple Run. I guess the question I just wanted to understand on public safety, on the Medicom, this increase in the budget, a hundred and fifty-six thousand, did we understand that when we, is that all for Norfolk's use, and did we understand that when we took on the responsibility to have the Medicom center, that burden of expense coming to us? I understand, I heard that we had a grant covering up until now, but did we understand this level of expense coming to us to this extent for a hundred and fifty-six thousand, a hundred and thirty-five percent increase?
Sir, anyone who can help Ed out, Justin, or?
Well, obviously, I'm the newer town administrator, and he's a Medicom, aside from the utilization that wasn't here. However, as part of the utilization, this is an endeavor that the state is really short promoting. There's been a lot of effort to provide dispatch services. So I hope as part of the discussion that we had, we would understand that there would, particularly with a grant funding part of these assessments over a five-year period, that it would gradually increase. However, we reduce the fund this by ourselves, the cost would be accepted by us. We have five other communities that are part of the Medicom, Boston, obviously, where it's expanded well, which would limit, which would reduce assessments in the future. But next year, after fiscal twenty-four budget, fiscal twenty-four budget will be the budget for, will be no more grants by the tax.
I guess my question is, I understand you weren't here, but I guess my question is for a small town, did we understand that this kind of a burden, at this cost, housing or hosting a regional center was going to be something that we were going to incur on an ongoing basis?
So, Ed, I mean, I'm just a little, I'm not sure what "we understand" means. I think if it's, if it's, did the chief administrative officials understand that when the grants fell off, that it would look like a budget increase? I think that's what we heard from Justin, for sure, so. But I don't want to speak for Justin or the select board either.
Just a surprise number to see such a large increase all at one time, you know, for, again, for a small town like ours, to have to absorb such a big increase at one time. That's why the question is, did we anticipate this? Did we understand, we being the town administrator, did we understand that this was coming?
And I think they're saying, yes. So did you have anything else under public safety, Ed?
No.
Okay, Mr. Lutz.
I was just going to address what I think one of Mr. Hadad's questions was, is that we do not, as the host of it, we do not bear the operating costs on our own, because those are shared. So us hosting the center does not mean we carry an extra burden because we are the host. And I think that was your question, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Hadad.
Ed, I don't want a conversation back and forth. I think, I think we understand that the points made by both people, so. Thank you for that contribution. Anything else on public safety? Ms. Klein? If you, I'm going to need you to go to a mic, Sue, sorry.
Yes, unfortunately, we did know that. We knew we had a certain number of years where we would be free, but it was part of the discussion of almost every meeting that we had when we were discussing it. So I'm not saying that you per se knew, I'm saying that I think that most everyone who served up here and was part of that process understood that once the grant ran out, we would have to shoulder the cost of it. It hurts this year, but it's going to be built into the budget from going forward.
Thank you, Ms. Klein. Seeing no one else rising on public safety, I'll move to education. We had a hold on education. Come on down to the mic.
Pranit Marjiter, Seven River Path Norfolk. I just feel free to let me know if I'm not following the process. I'm looking for information before we vote regarding some line items in education.
Sure.
So you can definitely guide me.
So that we know, just to be clear, I think we should have a discussion on line items, if you want to have that, but when we vote education budgets, we only vote the bottom line. So the fact that they give us detail is helpful, but we can't mess around with interim line items there. So, but please ask your question.
So am I allowed to ask a question?
You can ask a question through me, and if we think we can get it answered, we'll get it answered.
One is for the Norfolk Freeman Kennedy and the HOD, there was a fifty thousand IT position, and I want to understand, there was a comment from the superintendent that the two positions for two thousand users or two thousand people, and I just want to get a sense of what that fifty thousand is going to be. I mean, there are organizations that support a lot many users, given there's a lot of cloud computing that is being used, like Google and things like that. So I just want to get a sense of fifty thousand, is it for a position, is it for a salary increase, is it, you know, what that is, so we have a clear understanding, given how IT functions, that is one.
I think that's a fair question. Let's see if we can get that question answered for you.
That would be for a break-fixed position, but it is not in our budget. It's in the unfunded needs, so it is not part of the budget request for fiscal twenty-four. But it is for, we had hoped to add a break-fixed position for all of the equipment that we have in the schools, printers, copiers, our smart boards, all of the equipment, the devices students rely on when they go down. We don't have enough staff to be running around supporting all of the repairs. So it would be for a break-fixed position, but it is not actually part of the budget because we can't fund it.
Thank you. Do you have another question?
Yes.
Sure.
So this is to King Philip, congratulations on your retirement. One question was, again, if you can direct me to some other place where I can understand this better, that'd be appreciated, or you can answer it. You talked about one of your slides, the state aid, how King Philip is only getting seven percent, whereas the rest of it is going to other school districts. Is there a place, somewhere, or a document that we could understand why, you know, our town is only getting seven percent, whereas there are other districts that are getting more? And the second part of my question, which is based on your slides, one is the special education increase, I guess restitution increase that you said, that's a big chunk for Norfolk. What are the elements of that? Why is that, is it just general education and salaries, or is there something more that is contributing to the increase? And third part is, I mean, it is definitely a statement that is encouraging to all of us, which is, you know, all of our kids that are going to the regional school district will be going to college. You had made a statement saying that across national and state averages, you know, we are doing really well. What I'm curious about is, you know, average is very misleading, because you're taking the entire state average, everything below, everything above, and the national average also is the same thing. But is there, you know, data that compares us to similar towns of how much we're spending? And, you know, so I'm sure there's going to be competitive towns with our peers, and how are we doing compared to our peers rather than an average?
Okay, so we've got three questions, one regarding the formula, and I'm not sure if Paul has an advanced enough math degree to answer that. A little special education question, and then just kind of more of a general, kind of more feel-good kind of question on exactly how we come up with our representations regarding our success rates.
Paul, we've got a lot going on there, so let's see if we can unpack those for you. So the first one, the Student Opportunity Act was a look at the formula that the state uses around need for communities and how to distribute the state dollars. It's a complex formula, and I would direct you to the Massachusetts Department of Education's website for that explanation in further detail. But the formula heavily favors poverty communities. So in other words, it looks at the community's ability to fund their education programs. And if communities are able to fund them, they get less money, or perceived to be able to fund them. So the more need the community has, the more money they get. So when I said, when I showed you that slide, and it said that thirty-two communities were getting the majority of the money, those are all urban communities. They're getting a significant increase in dollars to help supplement the education they're providing to their students, because of the struggles that they have with tax revenues, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So the formula is not done at our level, and so I really don't think I can get into further detail for you than that, but I think that's probably a good overview of that piece of it. The second question, I believe, was regarding the special education costs. Private schools provide a comprehensive education for some of our students whose level of need, because of a disability, is so great that we are unable to program for them in the public school. Our goal is always to keep our students in the neighborhood schools with their peers, their siblings, in their community. And we've built extensive programs, both at the elementary level, and Dr. Ladi alluded to this, as well as the middle and high school level. And because of that, we've kept many more students in it, and we've reduced our special education costs dramatically. As a matter of fact, in the previous five years, KP's special education costs have gone down by fifty-five percent. We're very proud of that, saving money, but also keeping our students in their neighborhood schools where they belong. But some of those schools require, some of those students require a much more intensive education than we can provide for them. And so the school that they go to sets a tuition for that, based on the level of need they provide. So student may require round-the-clock medical attention, a nurse, feeding tubes, they might also require significant occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech therapy, many, many services. And so they calculate those tuitions, and we have no choice but to pay the tuition when we have to place the student there. The state has said that those schools have the right to raise their tuitions by fourteen percent for next year. So how the particular school breaks that down, where that fourteen percent, how they're using that money, that I can't speak to, but I can tell you that that overall cost of that special education tuition, and some of our tuitions in the state can run over three hundred thousand dollars. When that goes up by fourteen percent, that's a considerable chunk that we then have to bear the burden of. And so your third question was about the metrics. Okay, so there are a lot of different data points that we use to look at student success. So we look at our state assessment scores, we look at MCAS. So we are able to look at all of the MCAS scores across the state. Our Massachusetts scores, King Philip consistently outperforms the state average, and you're right, the state average is up and down. We also look at the NAPES scores, the National Assessment of Education Progress. The National Assessment of Education Progress looks at the whole country, and Massachusetts outperforms every other state in the country. We look at AP scores, so AP students can earn anywhere from a one to a five on an AP exam. If they get threes, fours, or fives, they can get college credit, depending on the school, for those scores. Our AP scores are considerably higher than the state and the national average. Again, breaking that down by community, there are three hundred and fifty-one communities in Massachusetts. What I can tell you is that all of that data is available on the Department of Education's website. So you can go to the Department of Education, click on their website, and there's a spot that says "profile," and it'll allow you to put in any school district, and then it will give you all of the demographic information, from our scores, to our population, to the amount of money we spend per student. And there are even tools within that that allow you to compare with other communities. So depending on how deeply you want to explore that information, there's a wealth of information right on that Department of Education website that you can explore. Hopefully, that answers your questions for you.
Can I ask a clarification, or is that not allowed?
Sure, one quick one, and I want to move on.
Thank you so much, Dr. Paul. Just to your statement about the data, I'm not talking about the breakdown of the metrics. I just want to know, just like, you know, Dr. Alardi has a comparison town, which is similar to our demographics, and do you have something which compares us to our peer towns, rather than everything across the state or the country? So as an example, I could be wrong here, but let's say we take King Philip district and compare it to Boxborough or Southborough, Lincoln, or whichever that is, whichever towns we compare ourselves with, is there something like that?
I think he just described that would be under the profiles on the website, where you can literally go school by school.
Okay, thank you so much, appreciate it. Yeah, thank you very much.
I would also share that if you watch our King Philip School Committee meetings, at certain points in the year, I bring that information to the committee. So when we have our AP scores that have come out, I will bring you the Hockamock scores and show you how we compare to all of the communities in our area, and share that information. So as different scores come out, we present that at different times.
Thank you. Okay, any, seeing no further discussion on education, there is a hold on exempt debt.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Pretty simply, I just would like an explanation, what does that mean, for the uneducated?
So exempt debt is the debt that we, correct me if I'm wrong, anyone, that we incur through debt exclusion, so not through, it's outside of our levy limit, so when the town votes here for excluded debt, big-ticket items, like we just did for the fire station?
Yeah.
Where we're going outside of our proposition two-and-a-half limits for a debt, for the duration of that debt, it's considered outside of the prop two-and-a-half, and then it comes off the books.
So was there something specific in this four hundred thousand that, I know the fire station, that wasn't the fire station, obviously, was there something specific in the four hundred thousand?
If anyone wants to talk about why the change number there. Todd? Todd Lindmark, our finance director.
All right, can you hear me? So for the exempted debt, now I'm on, I'll be a little quieter. So we have five items that are exempt currently. We have a school refunding, the public safety building, which is the police station, another portion which is a part of the school, as well as the new fire station component. Adding those items up came to two million four, and the increase is really associated with the difference between the fire station add of five hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars towards it, and that's the interest payment that will be made this upcoming fiscal year, and then the reduction in the other debt payments that we do. So every year, as the deck goes on, the payments go down, so combining those two accounts for the increase of the four hundred thousand dollars.
Thank you, Todd. Okay, seeing no further people rising on any of the three held items, we are going to take a vote on the omnibus budget. It requires a simple majority. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes, I believe unanimously. We are moving on to Article seven, the Water Enterprise Fund.
Mr. Moderator, I move to adopt the Public Works Water Division Enterprise Fund budget for the fiscal year commencing on July first, two thousand twenty-three, in the amount of one point six million, seventy thousand, six hundred fifty-four dollars, as printed in the warrant.
Is there a second? Been moved and seconded. Mr. Garrity?
This is the water budget, which is funded entirely by your water rates, and you can see the amounts in both the screen and in the handouts.
Questions, comments, concerns? Requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes unanimously. Article eight is the wastewater enterprise budget. Mr. Garrity?
Mr. Moderator, I move to adopt the Public Works Water Division Enterprise Fund budget Mr. Moderator, I move to adopt the Public Works Wastewater Division Enterprise, Enterprise Fund budget for the fiscal year commencing on July 1st, 2023, in the amount of 200,618 as displayed on the screen. Well, or in your handout.
Been moved and seconded. Mr. Garrity?
This funds the wastewater portion of the, of the DPW's activities.
Questions, comments, concerns on the wastewater budget? Seeing none, it requires a majority vote. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes unanimously as well. Article IX is the capital budget. Ms. Klein?
Mr. Moderator, I move to indefinitely postpone Article IX.
It's been moved and seconded to indefinitely postpone any capital budget. Ms. Klein?
Article IX is to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from any available source or funds some of money to find, to fund capital and other expense items and take action relative to. The advisory committee recommends indefinite postponement of this article. We do not have any capital purchases right now. We usually do those in the fall.
Seeing no one rising to ask a question, this requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes unanimously. Article 10, capital through borrowing. Ms. Klein?
Mr. Moderator, I move to indefinitely postpone Article 10.
It's been moved and seconded. Ms. Klein?
Article 10 is to see if the town will vote to raise, appropriate, transfer available funds, or borrow some of money to fund capital items, including all expenses incidentally related thereto, and further to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the select board to borrow such, such a sum pursuant to Mass General Law 44, seven or eight, and any other enabling authority to issue bonds or notes therfor, take any other action relative to. The advisory committee recommends indefinite postponement of this article. This article would authorize capital purchasers during the upcoming fiscal year through debt financing. Similar to Article IX, the town is not proposing any capital projects or purchases at this time. There may be some proposals to be considered later in town meeting, meaning in the fall. Therefore, the advisory committee recommends indefinite postponement. Again, we just, we usually reserve these for the fall, so.
Seeing no one rising to speak on this article, this requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes unanimously. Article 11, annual authorization of revolving fund limits. Mr. Lutz?
Mr. Moderator, Mr. Moderator, I vote to approve Article 11 as printed in the warrant.
It's been moved and seconded. We need to get a little quicker on these seconds here, folks. Mr. Lutz?
This is the article that authorizes the fund limits for all of our revolving funds. None of these amounts have changed since last year. The committee voted to support these amounts.
Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none? Wait, are you, no, she's just chatting with someone? Okay, this requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes unanimously. Article 12, annual authorization of roadway funds from the state. Mr. Garrity?
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article 12 as printed in the warrant.
Been moved and seconded. Thank you, Mr. Lutz. Mr. Garrity?
This is the routine annual article which allows the selectmen to receive and spend Chapter 90 roadway funds from the state.
Thank you. Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, requires a majority vote. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? No. It passes unanimously as well. Article 13 doesn't require motion. It calls for reports by the boards or committees that approach us and offer, offer comments. Ms. Klein, I see you rising. Is that, no? Okay. We, we have three that I know of tonight. We're going to start with the Affordable Housing Trust. Ms. Jacobson, it's good to see you.
Nice to see you as well. My name is Susan Jacobson. I'm the Affordable Housing Director, and I'm really just here to brief everybody and provide some bullet points on what the Affordable Housing Trust has been doing and to let you know that the mission of the Norfolk Municipal Affordable Housing Trust is to meet the 10% state mandate and to help families improve their position in life and help them become part of our community. Over the years, we have been purchasing single-family homes. We are currently somewhere between 5% and 6%. It, it fluctuates a bit. They come on, they come off, they come back on. We have not been able to purchase in, single-family homes since the pandemic hit and made the housing market go a bit haywire. But as most of you know that are living in town, we have several 40B developments that all contain 25% of the units as affordable. I have been certified by both Mass Housing and DHCD to provide lottery services to developers for both 40B developments in the town of Norfolk and outside of the town of Norfolk. So I have been able to bring in some significant fees. We expect over the next two years, maybe two to three years, that, that those fees will be about 300,000, which is a tremendous way to offset costs, to have me and to help with some other programs. I want to make everybody aware that we have four upcoming lotteries in Norfolk. We're going to have some probably between 35 to 40 units over the next two or three years under construction and those lotteries will be held. We do reach out to all town employees. We have a new website. We have a new PR firm that we're going to use to really try to help get the word out. But we have had, in the last several lotteries, we've had more people than we have homes. So the word is out that Norfolk has affordable housing and we're working really hard to continue to provide homes. If anybody has any questions, I'm in the office full-time. You can always reach out to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jacobson. Next, I think we're going to get an update on the fire station building. Mr. Champagne, I believe?
Kevin Champagne, Two Seneca Street, Chair of the Fire Station Building Committee. I'll be pretty quick. First of all, I wanted to thank everybody who came out to vote for the project. We're obviously very excited. The project's underway. If you've driven through town, you've probably noticed that we've, we've broken ground. Actually, the chief organized a very nice groundbreaking ceremony two Saturdays ago now. So we had a really good turnout for that. Basically, we've been doing utility relocation work, rock excavation, and preparing for foundation. So foundation work should be starting relatively soon. We're still on track to have the new building complete in June of 2024, and then the full site project complete, existing building knocked down later that fall. If you're interested in, in kind of seeing the, the construction progress, you can obviously see it from Dunkin' Donuts. Or we are still meeting as a committee. We still have all the same committee members. We're, we're meeting once a month on the second Wednesday of each month at, at 6 o'clock at Town Hall. We're also working to get up on the town website, on the Fire Station Building Committee page. We have NCTV and some other town residents who have been nice enough to take some pictures of construction progress that we'll be getting that up there. And then our owner's project manager, Vertex, also has a monthly report that they're going to post on the website, just so you can kind of keep track. So thank you for your continued interest and hope to see you at an upcoming meeting. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Next, we are going to have an, a quick report on potential, I believe, potential building projects at Norfolk Public Schools. Second of two consecutive Champagnes.
Yes, Midora Champagne, Two Seneca Street. There's, we just keep multiplying over there. I'm the current Chair of the Norfolk Public School Committee. So as both Ingrid and Paul alluded to in their presentations, not so subtly, the school districts have been seeing a substantial increase in enrollment over the past decade, I'd say, give or take. The local school district has been tracking enrollment since around 2017. So I'm here to just give a brief timeline of what we've been up to and how we're planning to at least try to address the situation locally. In 2017, a space study was formed to consider projected enrollments. Enrollment studies were performed by NESDEC, which is an outsourced group who confirmed that yes, enrollment is definitely spiking in the local school district. In 2018, a very preliminary study was done as to how to possibly address enrollment. We looked at, actually, I was not part of that space study, but the study considered a few options, including a third site for schools in town and doing, bringing in modular classroom facilities. Both of those were dismissed as being both cost prohibitive and logistically, I mean essentially impossible, given the space constraints we have even on the sites at the two schools that we have in town. The third option that was identified as the most reasonable option was the expansion of the Freeman Kennedy School to relocate the early education program from HOD to the Freeman School, freeing up classroom space at HOD and adding classroom space at Freeman. So last year in the spring, after another round of updated enrollment projections were obtained in 2019, last year in the spring, at the Springtown Meeting, funds were appropriated for a feasibility study to assess what an actual addition to FK would look like, whether it would meet the long-term needs and still be the most fiscally responsible approach to take to dealing with the enrollment. So in the fall of this past year, after the funds were appropriated at Town Meeting, AI3 Architects, which is a firm that specializes in schools and educational facilities, was retained to conduct a feasibility study that went on through about April of this spring and has been concluded. It has been confirmed that the recommended course of action to address the long-term needs of the district is to put a two-story addition onto the existing structure at the Freeman School. We have been discussing this regularly at school committee meetings, which happen once a month. In addition to that, there have been two actually very well-attended, so I see some familiar faces in this audience who have been to those public forums that were held at Freeman to discuss the proposal, what it would look like, you know, both kind of structurally, what the actual addition would look like, what it would look like educationally, how it would meet the long-term needs of the district, and what some of the potential costs associated with that project would be. We have submitted three separate applications for participation to the Massachusetts School Building Authority. We have unfortunately, in that very competitive environment, not been successful in being invited to participate in that program. Norfolk has, on two separate occasions, I think, been invited to participate in an MSBA-funded program, which is fantastic, and so we were hopeful that we might be able to do that as well. But at this point, the space constraints that we are facing due to the increasing enrollment are at a point that is untenable for the district. And so the intention is to proceed into the next phase of the process, which would be schematic design, beginning in the fall through another town meeting vote, and then ideally after approximately a year, come forward to the town with a proposed full project and the costs associated with that, to vote as to whether or not expansion's going to be possible. So I would encourage anyone who's interested in the process and concerned about what it might look like for the town to come to a school committee meeting, which we'd love to see you at a school committee meeting anyway, but this is obviously an important topic. In addition to that, we're going to be having some additional public meetings as we get into the summer and then obviously into the fall when we're looking to come back and begin the design process. So, thanks.
Thank you. I, I do not believe there are any other committee reports. Oh, here we go one here. I might have missed it. I apologize.
I was told to be here. Brian Mushnick, One Ferguson Road. I'm the Tri-County School Committee Representative. I'm also the Chairman of the School Building Committee. I'm, I'm sure a lot of you don't even know what Tri-County is. Tri-County is the vocational school that, that represents Norfolk, that accepts students from Norfolk. It's a building that is supported by 11-member district towns. It's been in existence since 1977. We're in the process now of working on a new building. We are much farther ahead than Norfolk. We, I can give you some background of the school. In '73, we formed our first school committee. In '74 to '77, the building was built at no cost to any of the towns. The state at the time had made a, a move to increase vocational training, which there was none of at the time. The building's been in existence now close to 50 years and it's starting to age out. It's done a great job, but the time has come to do some major repair, which has actually replaced the building. We did a feasibility study a few years ago after we'd had a review of the building in 2016, 2014, excuse me, and they had determined that the cost to do straight repairs on the building we had was going to be in excess of 150 million. At that point, we had applied to MSBA for invitation into their reimbursement program five times and had been roundly turned down four of those times. On the fifth application, we were accepted. At that point in time, we entered into it and selected an owner, project manager, and I brought him with me today, Trip Elmore from, from Dorn Whittier, who you'll recognize the name from the fire department. We entered into a feasibility study that the state accepted. We submitted to them three options: repair the building the way it is, make no improvements at all. There's a lot of deficiencies in the building. We have no security for the children. Obviously, everything's 50 years old. We have no sprinklers. It's a very inefficient building and it's literally starting to just fall apart. Although it looks like a very nice building, if you've toured there before, and I welcome all of you to come up and tour the building, you'll find that it's, it's disintegrating. At the time it was built, it was very cool. I don't know, show of hands, anybody been up there before? Oh, pretty good. I'll remind you all that we own 111th of that building. We send our students there. It's our responsibility. When they built it back in the 70s, it was really cool. And I'll tell you, I was in the first class there. Walked in the door in 1977. It was the most amazing-looking building. And I walk in it and go, whoa, this is a pretty unique building. We don't meet any ADA compliance. Our, we have ramps. The ramps are 11 degrees. Wheelchairs don't go up them. We have an elevator that won't fit a gurney for an ambulance. Again, no sprinklers. The pipes are buried under the slab, which at the time seemed like a great idea until you break a pipe. Then we play, let's hammer through the slab and find out where whatever it is leaking is leaking from. The windows, when they were installed in the building originally, were part of the structure. So as they were laying brick, they put the frame in and brick around it. You can't fix that stuff. It, it's got problems. So after we were, when we were accepted and we had to give them three options: repair the building the way it was, addition renovation, or new building. We did a feasibility study on all three, came up with numbers, and submitted the option of new building, expand, instead of expansion. The reason we went there is because, and I, I really hate saying this, we're down to within about 20 million dollars in, in orders of magnitude between repair it, which many other schools have done, and then come back five years later and say, this leaks, this is wrong, this doesn't fit, or start from scratch and hopefully build a building that'll last at least another 50 years, if not longer. At present, our timeline brings us to schematic design. We've been approved by the state. We are building, we are working with our architects, DRA, putting together an actual physical plan for a building, a design. A lot of you probably, you've either heard numbers that aren't correct or haven't heard numbers at all. The reason you don't hear numbers is we do not want to put the wrong number out there. Within about a month, six weeks, we will have an actual, real Within about a month, six weeks, we will have an actual, real, bona fide number of what this building project is going to cost. Our website will then have a tax calculator on it. Because it's 11 different towns, you've got to select your town, it'll tell you what it might cost you. Please go to Tri-County's website, the New Building Committee, it's right on the front page of their website. You can get all our up-to-date information. We meet constantly. I'm there, I feel like every day. There's a lot going on, there'll be a lot more information. At Norfolk Day, I'll be there with an information booth, where I'll have even more information to let you know what's going on. Some side information. The average age of the vocational worker or tradesperson in Massachusetts right now is 50 years or older, and they're expecting to retire in the next 10 years. We are not backfilling them fast enough. If you need a plumber, if you need an electrician, if you need a carpenter, you know where we are. This is how we fill them in. A little bit about the school. So a little over 50% of our students graduate and go on to either a two- or four-year college. They get an excellent, excellent education, as every town in Massachusetts does. We have excellent sports, we also teach them a trade. I'll be looking to talk to all of you on Norfolk Day. Thank you.
Those are the reports, thank you for all of them. I apologize for having missed the Tri-County. Okay, so as I mentioned at the top of the comments this evening, we are now going to pick up Article 30. Ms. Klein is making the motion under Article 30.
This is the lowest, yeah, thank you guys for coming and for staying. It's very important work that is done here. Okay. This is a change from what is printed in the warrant. I'd like to take a moment.
So let's make the motion first, and then...
Okay. Can you hear me now?
She's right next to the microphone.
I don't think I could get any closer. So this is a change from what is printed in your warrant. I will answer the questions about why in just a moment, but... Mr. Moderator, I move to indefinitely postpone Article 30 as printed in the warrant.
So just, that's the motion, to indefinitely postpone. Is there a second?
I agree.
Okay. Now you can give an explanation.
Okay. So Article 30 is to see if the town will vote to authorize the Select Board to acquire by purchase, gift, or eminent domain easements on Lawrence Street for the purpose of acquiring the right-of-way to install sidewalks required by the permit for the weights-crossing comprehensive permit, and to take any action relative thereto. The Advisory Committee originally recommended approval of this article, however, in our meeting, we have a meeting, every town meeting prior to town meeting, to discuss any last-minute business, and in this meeting, we had been waiting on a final number. We had originally voted to approve this without that final number, assuming that what we thought the number was going to be is what it was going to be. It did not come in at our expected number, so we took, which we have done on occasion before, we revisited our vote. So we just reconsidered, it's reconsider the motion. So we did that, and when we did that, we voted to, we basically voted no, which is the same thing, but as indefinitely postponed. So the way this is written is a little bit off, but I'm going to do my best. The article authorizes the Select Board to acquire easements on Lawrence Street. This would allow for the installation of sidewalks, as is required in the new neighborhood developments, which is specified in the permit for weights-crossing. The Advisory Committee originally voted six to one in favor, but today we voted five to one. We voted no. Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Klein.
I think that's the best explanation I have. Does anyone have any questions?
So...
Yes, please.
That's my job there, Sue. So, no, come on, Chris.
Can you explain what numbers changed?
Yeah. A lot of times when we're in our advisory discussions, the people who are presenting to us don't have everything in the moment. They give us estimates, they give us what they think it's going to be, and because of the timeline of being able to print a warrant with our recommendations in it for you, we take action without having all of the information. And that is what's happened. I believe the number that we had originally discussed was around 15,000, and the number that came in today was around 55,000. It's a little different. And I guess to the best, the way that we can explain it is though we see this as an important first step in finishing the weights-crossing development, and we do agree that sidewalks need to be in there, I think that, speaking on behalf of most of the board, what we disagree with is the avenue in which we're going down to get this done, and we felt like postponing and/or voting no on this would stir the conversation in a way to have them try a different approach, instead of us just paying the 55,000 to buy the pieces of land from the homeowners, the existing homeowners, to put the sidewalk in. It's not saying we don't want the sidewalks, it's just saying we want them to go back to the drawing board, so to speak.
Mr. Rosenberg.
This is my time?
Here we go.
David Rosenberg, 123 North Street. I'd appreciate some explanation of the requirement from the permitting. If I'm reading this correctly, it sounds like the town issued a permit requiring the town to have sidewalks. Is it the case that the permitting process laid a requirement on the town to do this?
No.
Not quite. Mr. McCarthy, if we could just have a brief explanation, because I do not want to get too far in the weeds on this. If you can just give a brief history.
The weights-crossing comprehensive permit included a sidewalk as part of it. Part of it was for the pursuit of easements in order to facilitate the sidewalk. If the easements weren't pursued, there are some other provisions within the permit that could be triggered, so...
So I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Rich, I don't want to speak out of turn, but the developer isn't paying for the sidewalk. So if the town wants to build them, it would require to, it'd be required to obtain property rights, either through purchase or eminent domain. The town conducted appraisals, those numbers are in, that's how much that property would cost. It's also my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. McCarthy, that if we don't go forward with this, that the developer is required to make a contribution to the town's sidewalk fund?
Yes, there's a provision whereby the developer would have to put $150,000 into a sidewalk fund.
If we don't fund this? Correct. Does that help answer your question?
It helps somewhat, but I guess I'm confused about why we would pay anything if we could not pay anything, and that would force the developer to pay $150,000.
I think if we get past indefinite postponement, maybe we'll have that discussion. Thank you, Mr. McCarthy, thank you, Mr. Rosenberg. Any further questions or comments? Come on down to the mic.
Karen McCabe, Lawrence Street. What are the next steps? Because the $150,000 to the town is great, but the town doesn't need to deal with the additional houses for this development. So we think the neighborhood that has to deal with the development should get the sidewalks, not the town. Because if it goes into the town fund, it will not be put to our neighborhood. We have a brand-new bridge, but no way to get to the bridge.
Well, I'm not gonna, I don't want to, again, get too far...
Since it's...
Hold on, I mean...
But what are the next steps?
I heard what you said. I'm not going to go too far afield here into what steps or what the town's priorities are with respect to sidewalks. Perhaps if there's anyone at the town level that has any insight as to the process for deciding how our sidewalk fund or our DPW monies are spent on sidewalks, I'll allow just that much to, because I'm not going to forecast future decision-making. If I can get just some roundabout process for how the town makes decisions on new sidewalks in town. Mr. McCarthy?
I'm not really actually the person to answer the question.
Okay, so then you can sit down if you want. I don't want to have you answer a question if you're not knowledgeable on it.
Larry Crane, DPW Director. There is a process that we go through. We just had a sidewalk study done over the past year, where we evaluate every sidewalk that we have in town, which is about 40 miles. And so with that, some of that will go into new sidewalks as we continue, and some of it will go into repairing the sidewalks that we have, which is an extensive amount of mileage. But there is no definitive process for that.
Thank you.
So the...
Do you have a follow-up?
Yeah, the board recommended that, they said they'd look at another way. Is it another way to the sidewalks? Or, yeah, no, it's money, but...
It's not another way to get the sidewalk. Another way to get the sidewalk is to take it, and judge it on going over the back out, sell it, buy the property, put it in the sidewalk. If that's possible, go in. If you both...
So to be clear, we are not taking a position here tonight that the sidewalks are going in or not going in. The question before us, and I'm not going to go, I appreciate your interest in the sidewalks, believe me. We're here to debate right now whether or not this town meeting is going to consider appropriating money that could be used to either take people's property for sidewalks or purchase their property for sidewalks at the discretion of the Select Board, or not. The current motion is to not consider this article now. If you would like to consider this article now, you will vote no on this motion, and we'll see if someone makes a motion to approve it. Right now, the recommendation is that this is not something that the Advisory Board is recommending. That is the debate right now. If we want to have a motion on the positive appropriation, we'll have that debate following. Right now, it's just to indefinitely postpone consideration of the $55,000. Sir?
Eric Diamond, 340 Main Street. What is the timing implications of not obtaining easements by the comprehensive permit? Isn't there a specific timeline that has to be completed and easements given towards the developer to put the sidewalk in, and at a certain point, we lose out?
So if I understand, your question is timing to either pay for it ourselves or trigger the developer's responsibility to give us 150 grand? Mr. McCarthy, you have an answer to that? And then I don't want to go too much into the comprehensive permit, I'd like to take a vote on the motion on the floor.
So the way the permit was originally drafted with the conditions was that the sidewalk and the waterline installation that's going to be going to Lawrence Street would happen Where we're potentially looking at is that the waterline is scheduled to start in June of this year. There is still provision within the special, within the comprehensive permit, there's still time before ultimately a payment would potentially be made if it doesn't go forward. So we can't continue to hold up the project going forward in terms of the water line and so forth, but there is still time left in terms of maybe to come up with some other alternative way to take care of this, though. Because the money doesn't, the obligation to pay the sidewalk fund is from a year from this point. So we're kind of at the impasse. Essentially, we'll be at the impasse tonight, depending on how this vote goes. So there's a year from that point when that payment happens to be made. So there's still time in the grand scheme, in the big picture.
And again, that $150,000, I just want everyone to be clear, that is not earmarked for this sidewalk or any other particular sidewalk, and it's not the only funds that the town has available for sidewalks. Not saying that we're flush with money for sidewalks, I think far from it, but there's, that's what we have on it.
Donna Jones, North Street. Would information about what's on the map on the screen help us to determine whether to postpone or not?
I think the map on the screen shows it's, there's a somewhat, there is another image available, but I think the easements, I think, are depicted in the purple areas, what we would have to take in order to create a sidewalk and do the necessary associated grading work with it. So, yeah. You can see it right there where it says "proposed easements" there. That's all area that would be required, all of those little bits and pieces along Lawrence Street. You're welcome. Ms...
Quick, no, just a quick question. Sue Jacobson, 46 Needham Street. So if the water project is moving forward, and there's a cost to digging up that, would the town just be required to kind of backfill it, and that would be it?
I'm not, I don't want to talk about the water project, Sue.
Okay.
I appreciate the question. Okay, so no one at the mic. So again, if you're in favor of postponing for this town meeting, consideration of appropriating $55,000 to pay for sidewalk easements, then you are going to vote yes. If you're not in favor of indefinitely postponing, and would like to open up the possibility of voting for this, then you will vote no. So, all those in favor of indefinitely postponing, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
All right, so I'm gonna, there's a small enough number of people here in the hall that I'm going to do it by a standing vote, so I should be able to get it by that. If you are in favor of indefinitely postponing, please stand. If you are opposed to indefinitely postponing, please stand. It's pretty clear to me that the ayes have it on indefinite postponement. Article 14, Master Plan Funding. Mr. Lutz.
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article 14 as printed in the warrant and to raise and appropriate, appropriate $50,000 of funding.
Mr. Lutz.
This is the article that appropriates the funds to provide funding for the second year of the master plan that's underway. As you came in, there was a woman out front distributing information on this. The town undertook this at the beginning of last year, using some grant funding and funding that we appropriated at last year's town meeting. This funding would allow them to complete that study. They, the Metropolitan Planning Commission has begun that work, has begun meeting with folks. They had a community forum about a month ago, I think, three weeks or a month ago. The members of committee had long discussions about this. The general consensus is that a master plan is as good as it being used, and we've talked to both the town administrator and the town planner about that, and they are in agreement with us on that, that we need, if we do, if and when we finish this master plan, it needs to become a guiding document for us. So having said that, I would encourage people to participate in the master planning process, and then also to stay involved with our elected officials to ensure that they use it as a guidance document for moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lutz. Any questions, comments, concerns on master plan funding? Seeing none requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? It passes unanimously. Article 15 is some supplemental funding for wastewater. Mr. Hurwitz.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from the wastewater division enterprise fund retained earnings to sum of $58,000 to cover the shortfall in actual revenues for fiscal year '23.
It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Hurwitz.
All right, it's anticipated there's going to be a shortfall in user fee payments, which per state regulations... must be balanced as part of the budget process. This article will allow for funds to be transferred from other town budget sources to allow for balancing of the expected fee shortfall. Advisory Committee unanimously recommends approval of this article.
Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you. Can you please explain how the fees are assessed and why there is a shortfall in the anticipated receipt of fees?
It would be either... Who do we have? I think everyone wants someone else to explain this one.
I think Blair, you should do the assessment of the fees.
That's an excellent delegation of responsibility by our chief executive officer, everybody. You get the short straw, Blair, so go ahead.
Absolutely. Blair Crane, Director of Public Works. So, the current agreement for wastewater is that the entities that utilize that facility have an allocation. So, based on the overall number, the different... There are different allocations depending on which group of users is using the facility. That will change going forward, but we do have, and Todd could speak to this, there are a couple of users where we have had trouble collecting those fees, and that's where we are in arrears.
For Mr. Rosenberg's benefit, can you perhaps describe the change going forward that we may be seeking?
So, the... When we took over the wastewater treatment plant over 10... Well, over 10 years ago now, the original agreement gave the entities that use it particular allocation. It was not really considered to be an enterprise fund, much like water, and we are currently in the process of engaging and making it an enterprise fund. So, we're in a bit of a flux here as we change going forward, where we have users that aren't using it but have a percentage of allocation that they have to pay for. And the wastewater treatment plant going forward will be much like water where users are... They have what they use. So, going forward, there will be a change.
And that should help with the shortfall?
Correct.
Thank you.
I have a follow-up question, if I may?
If you may.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So, the question is, is the shortfall due to people not paying their assessments or is it due to the assessments being inappropriately low?
Oh, this is good. He's like handing the mic over. I don't know. Maybe we can make Todd answer this one.
That's right.
So, can everybody hear me? All right. So, last year, we had a budget shortfall, again, of about the same amount, $58,000, that we voted in last year. The idea here was to make up the difference. When I have to, at the end of the year, close out the books, I have to talk with the Division of Local Services and say, hey, by the way, here's my actual revenues for the year with my estimated revenues, and they have to kind of be in line based on the information that I'm providing them. If there's changes up or down, they want to know why. So, in order to levelize or come up with that difference, which is the shortfall between the non-collection, as well as trying to maintain the operations and do some guesswork, anywhere from six months to 18 months in advance of the actual work itself, contributes to some of those deficiencies that we've had at the sewer plant. But this year, right now, based on my estimate, we're going to close out the year about $131,000 in revenues, which is, again, another shortfall in total. So, to balance that between the 125 that I'm estimating for next year plus the $58,000 in reserves brings us to about the $203,000 budget which was presented earlier, and that's the number that I have to dovetail in with the Division of Local Services, otherwise they won't approve it.
Mr. Moderator, I very much appreciate that answer, though it didn't seem to address the question. The question was, is the problem that the assessments were too low or that people failed to pay their assessments?
I believe I answered it by saying it was a combination of those two items. So, we have people who are not making their payments on their bills. We have one individual who has not made payments since inception. We have others that are not making full payments to date. So, taking those two factors into consideration, along with, again, trying to budget what the expectation is, six months to 18 months in advance, contributes to those two factors.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great. Seeing no one else at the mic, we'll take a vote on this. Requires a simple majority. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It does pass. Article 16 was creation... Proposed creation of a stabilization fund. Ms. Klein.
Apparently, I got all the indefinite postponements. So, Mr. Moderator, I move to indefinitely postpone Article 16.
It's been moved and seconded. Ms. Klein, explanation.
This article would create a stabilization fund to accept funds from the state related to opioid settlements. The town has indicated that there is now some pending state legislation that would make the establishment of this fund unnecessary. Therefore, the Advisory Committee recommends indefinitely postponing this article.
Thank you, Ms. Klein.
Brief overview, we just don't need it anymore. That's all.
Mr. Rosenberg.
I'm glad to hear that we don't need it, but I guess I'd like to understand what the state legislation will do that would obviate the need for having this fund.
So, let me see if I can help out here. When money comes in from settlements, it's just kind of a general fund, kind of money just gets commingled, and these opioid settlements can only be spent on specific purposes, so it's hard to get the money out for those specific purposes. The state is looking to put a patch on it so that money could come in and then go out without further appropriation by this body. Is that right? Good.
Correct.
Okay. So, there we have it. So, the move is... The motion is to indefinitely postpone. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. It passes unanimously. Article 17 is a fund for cable access services.
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article 17 as printed in the warrant. So, this is another administrative cleanup. The article enables the town to create a separate revenue account called a PEG Access and Cable Related Fund, into which the fees and other revenues received from the cable companies are deposited and then transferred to the public educational and government PEG programming source, NCTV. This article brings the town into alignment with a recent statute that allows for the transfer of these funds separately from the town budget. The Advisory Committee voted unanimously to support this article.
Thank you, Mr. G. You're on a streak here, David.
Yes, I guess I'm interested in understanding how this money was handled up until now. That is, if the new fund is not created and we're... And we were to continue doing what we've been doing up to now, what is it that we have been doing up to now?
Anyone want to take this? Justin?
Yep. What the town has previously been doing, it's been, as part of the contracts or agreements with the distributors in town Comcast, Xfinity, the peg access funds have gone directly to NCTV. We've spoken with NCTV, talking about this warrant article. They're in agreement with this. Essentially, it's a cleanup article. It allows to come to the town first, we put in the stabilization fund, and then we appropriate at town meeting to distribute those funds to NCTV after that.
It's an accounting device. It makes it easier to account for those revenues. Seeing no further questions or comments requires a majority vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? No. It passes unanimously. Article 18 is annual revenues for the Community Preservation Committee.
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article 18 as printed in the warrant.
Been moved and seconded. Ms. Klein, explanation?
This standard annual article reserves funds from the Community Preservation Act revenues equal to the state mandated minimums of 10% for open space, 10% for affordable housing, and 10% for historic resources. The remainder is placed in undesignated funds and can be used for any allowable purpose.
This is an annual article for required set-asides for the... Under the Community Preservation Act. Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. It passes unanimously. Article 19, Administrative Funds for the Community Preservation Committee. Ms. Klein.
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article 19 as printed in the warrant.
Been moved and seconded. Ms. Klein.
This article would authorize the administrative budget for the Community Preservation Committee at $15,000, which would come from the Community Preservation Fund. This is the same amount that was approved in the current fiscal year's budget. The Advisory Committee voted to approve this expenditure.
Thank you. Again, an annual appropriation to help the Community Preservation Committee function. Seeing no comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. It does pass unanimously. Article 20, CPA Funds for the Grange Hall.
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article 20 as printed in the warrant to allocate $40,000 from the Community Preservation Fund Historical Preservation Reserve for the exterior renovation of the Norfolk Grange Hall.
It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Hurwitz.
The Advisory Committee unanimously recommends approval of this article. The Norfolk Grange is a nonprofit historic agricultural building on the National Register of Historic Places. The Grange Building is in need of exterior renovation and restoration. The funds allocated towards this renovation have been collected through the CPC Community Preservation Act and must be allocated towards historic building and open space preservation and will not result in a direct increase in taxes collected from town residents. The Grange has offered usage of the building and space to town and Norfolk schools' needs in addition to other local community groups at below-market rates.
Questions, comments? Seeing none requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It does pass unanimously. CPA Funds for an Open Space Plan. Mr. G.
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article 21 as printed in the warrant.
It's been moved and seconded. Mr. G.
Yes, this article requests use of $60,000 of CPC funds for an update of the Norfolk Open Space and Recreation Plan. The OSRP is a seven-year strategic planning document to succeed the current OSRP that carries through July 2024. The state-approved plan will allow the town to be eligible for certain state and federal grants. The money will hire a consultant to do a full outreach and recommend a strategy for creating, maintaining, and enhancing an open space plan.
Thank you, Mr. G. Any questions, comments? Mr. Smith, come on down.
Jonathan Smith, 26 Robin Road. I'm wondering if there is a relationship that will be between this article and the master plan.
I'm not sure... Oh, whether there will be some carryover between the two?
Yes.
Well, I think we're trying to fund the master plan, so I don't know. As a former member of the master plan committee, I think we looked in the past. The last time we looked at it, we tried to sync up some of the same open space interests, but obviously, that's still out there in front of us. I'm sure they will take it into consideration.
Okay.
I don't want to speak for them, however.
Jay, Mr. Moderator, I would just say that there is... There's some correlation. They're both strategic documents providing for the future of the town, so they will be independent documents, but there are correlation. It's going to be a collaborative process, allow for community feedback on both of those processes. So, just to keep it simple, I would just say that.
Thank you. Sure.
Brian Bechkovsky, Boardman Street. There were some questions as we reviewed this around how was the last open space plan utilized, and there are some opportunities for grants. We asked whether or not those opportunities in the use of that plan led to grants coming in that superseded the cost of the master plan development, and those were not able to be immediately answered. I was interested in seeing if there were other ways to update the master plan without paying 60K for a consultant to come in, so I have some open questions on alternative ways to develop a plan and how much it has been used in the past to guide our decisions.
Thank you, Mr. Bechkovsky. Do you have some...
His concern?
Sure, briefly, again.
Ann Proto, I'm the Recreation Director, and there was some concern and questions about what grants we have used in the past seven years. That's how long an open space and recreation plan lasts for. And in the past seven years, we didn't. But we also, in the previous to that, we had. Lynn Farm was one of the places that we acquired with the open space and the grants available. We are very close to acquiring the 43 acres that are adjacent to Pond Street, and the Recreation Commission would like to develop that with trails and such, and we recognize that there are several projects before the town, and we're very much planning on using the grants that are available because if we have an open space and recreation plan. These grants are not small grants. They're up to... There are... I can think of two off the top of my head. They're up to $500,000 that we would be eligible for. Doesn't mean we get them, but we could... We would be eligible for them. And there is the expansion of Pond Street would be the ideal time to use them.
Thank you, Ms. Proto. Seeing no further questions or comments? Come on down. You don't have to raise your hand and just... You can come down and line up at the mic if you like, but I do appreciate the courtesy.
Thank you. I just want to second the question that was asked about the master plan versus the recreation plan, and I think I just want to understand that better as well. You have a master plan process in place that the survey, when you look at all these documents, clearly, you know, asks questions about open space and recreation, and that is extremely important to this town, at least from my perspective, right? So, and then you're looking at 60,000 for another plan. You're paying a consultant. I mean, this is... If I hear correctly, it has nothing to do with purchasing or any project. You're paying a consultant for another plan that is going to go out another seven years. The master plan is 10 years. Open space and recreation is a critical part of the town. Can that not be, you know, combined, or is there no process to...
Well, there are two separate legally, kind of... They stand on slightly different footing. Again, I think you heard from our town administrator that there's going to be every effort for a collaborative process. There might be nuanced differences between the two, I suppose, but these are hypothetical questions that I'm not sure we can get into.
Sure.
They both require professional guidance in some way, how that's funded. Right now, we're asking for $60,000 from this body, but they can't be merged, and that's not before us anyway.
Can I ask a follow-up question?
Briefly.
Sure, I'll be quick. I understand there's legal and all kinds of, you know, aspects to this. As citizens, where we are spending our tax dollars, I think it will be important to understand from our perspective, open space, recreation, master plan for the entire town, and we would love to have that, but, you know, maybe the experts should be telling us, why are they separate and why can't they be somehow combined? That's all I hinted at.
Right. Sounds like we have a potential volunteer.
Hi, yes. My name is Caitlin Novar. I'm the conservation agent, and I just want to speak to the difference between the two plans.
Briefly.
So, the main point is, the open space plan identifies and serves to protect the town's natural resources, our drinking water supply areas, our, you know, town water bodies, and things to that nature.
The master plan does serve additional roles on future planning, and it helps with grants and other things, and it talks about economic development as well. So, they do different things. Mr. Lutz? You're done. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, I think we're ready to have a vote on this. All those in favor of... All those in favor of Article twenty-one, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes by a majority. Article twenty-two, CPA funds for, I believe, a town hill study.
Mr. Moderator, I move to indefinitely postpone Article twenty-two.
It's been moved and seconded to indefinitely postpone. Mr. Bechkovsky.
The advisory committee recommends indefinite postponement of this article. The Community Preservation Committee ultimately recommended that this issue be delayed into a future town meeting. In their opinion, and in the opinion of the advisory committee, the issue needs to be studied further before it can move to being a paid feasibility study.
Questions, comments on indefinite postponement of this study? Seeing none, all those in favor of indefinite postponement, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. It passes by a majority. There's some zoning articles coming up. The first zoning article, number twenty-three, regarding parking. Mr. Lutz.
Mr. Moderator, I approve, I move to approve Article twenty-three as printed in the warrant.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Lutz.
Mr. Moderator, this makes a technical correction to a bylaw change that we adopted at last spring's town meeting, which adopted different standards for open space recreational parking areas.
Hey, I have a recommendation from the planning board.
Chad Pack, Ten Rides for our chairman of the planning board, and we agree with this as well. Just to clean up the language, make a correction.
Any questions, comments? Article twenty-three requires a two-thirds majority vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. It passes unanimously. Article twenty-four is roadway acceptance rights Farm Way, I believe. Mr. G.
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article twenty-four as printed in the warrant.
Can I get a second? It's been moved and seconded. Mr. G.
Yeah, this article will allow the town to accept rights Farm Road off of Meeting House Road as a public way.
Questions, comments? Seeing none requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. It passes unanimously. Article twenty-five is a zoning amendment regarding signs. Mr. G.
Mr. Moderator, I move to amend the town's zoning bylaws, section three-ten-six-point-nine, sign regulations as printed in the warrant.
Mr. G.
Yeah, so, there are several pages of recommendations here. So, the article to amend the zoning bylaws to allow for a wider variety of signage was approved by the advisory committee by a split vote of three in favor and two against with one abstention. It's safe to say that all supported the need to update the currently restrictive regulations for the benefit of businesses in the town, and all on the committee were appreciative of the thorough and thoughtful approach taken by the planning board to develop and present this plan. The advisory committee heard support for the changes from members of the Norfolk Small Business Association. The main reservations expressed by some members of the advisory committee was that the plan didn't go far enough, and that it should not be considered the sole solution for promoting wider tax revenue and diversified tax base. In the end, the majority position was that this is a step in the right direction.
Thank you. Mr. Peck, you want to, or whoever? Thank you, Melissa. We can have the planning board recommendation, first of all, and then if you have any further explanation, then that is fine as well.
So, from the planning board, we have, and when you say recommendation, am I supposed to?
You're recommending approval.
We are recommending approval of the amendment of the sign bylaws.
And then if there's, if you want to, you don't have to?
There's more.
Okay. Hopefully, not too much more.
No, 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 no.
The Celts are up by eight, but, right.
I promise, I promise. It will not take long. So, Article twenty-five, as I said, is an amendment to our sign bylaws, which was prompted by our Small Business Association. The president of the Small Business Association in town came to a planning board meeting pleading with us to help them to have updated sign bylaws created. They feel that they're too restrictive. One of the businesses had a SWOT analysis done where the weakness was the signage. We dug into that further. It wasn't the branding, it's not the colors, it's not even where the sign is located, it's specifically visibility. At night, you cannot see the signs at all on her buildings. So, we throughout the past eight or nine months now have been meeting regularly with the Small Business Association. They've come to our meetings. We've worked together on this proposal for the updated sign bylaws. The advisory committee did say they didn't think it went far enough. That's true. However, what we're working on is what is needed today for the small businesses, what they have come to us with, and we've gone ahead and done some research with similar towns to look at their bylaws and see what they allow, just to compare Norfolk and kind of benchmark where we're at. With towns that are around here, that could potentially be our competition, if you will. If businesses wanted to open up here, maybe they would go to Rentham instead if it's, you know, less restrictive. So, we did look at other town bylaws, did the comparison, and so, what you'll see in the documents that you have is you'll see a lot of words, and some of them are bolded. We are only recommending the changes that are in bolded text, and because I know it's going to be hard to visualize a sign based on, you know, just a few sentences of text, I do have some slides to show you what we mean, so it's not so unknown. So, I'll go through what we have in town today, which you'll all be familiar with, and then after that, I'll show you what we're proposing. Next slide, please. Okay, so the business signs as it stands today, we essentially have two options. One is surface mount, which you'll see the Exhale Dance sign there. That is just, you know, a sign that's surface mount right onto the building. There's no lighting on that one. You can have external lighting, like you'll see with Four Kicks, and you can kind of see on the bottom of the other sign, which is over by River's Edge. That works fine for Four Kicks. The sign is close to the ground. It's only one brand that's being lit, and, you know, it's a fairly sizable sign, anyway. And then if you look over to the right of that, it's essentially, that's another type of monument sign, but it's from multi-business. And so, when you have an externally-lit sign of that size, you might be able to see as you're driving by the bottom two rows of businesses. The rest of them, you cannot see at all. And so, that's an issue for the businesses over in River's Edge specifically. Next slide, please. Next one. Thank you. So, what we're proposing here is signs that would be focused on walkability first, and we'll get to the lit sign proposal in a moment. But when we were going through the sign bylaws, what we realized is that the sign on the left there, which I would call a cafe sign, in the bylaws, it says protruding, because it protrudes from the building. The other signs that you saw, like the Exhale Dance sign, that's what you can have as a sign right now, if you just want to have a surface mount sign. This here, and that, the exhale one, that can protrude more than twelve inches. So, what we're saying here is this is also, you know, a very cute sign, it's tasteful. It would be great for a walkable downtown, which we all tend to want, and because it's perpendicular to the building, when you're walking by or driving by, it's actually easier to see the words, even if it's not lit. So, that would be a great option for the B-one district downtown. It protrudes more than twelve inches, which is why it's not allowed today. So then, and then the Sandwich Board sign was another one. When we went to the Small Business meeting, I expected really that they would say, we really need internally-lit or backlit signs, and they do. They did say that, and we'll get there. But what they mentioned was that in our bylaws, it was really confusing. The temporary signs, like the one on the right, the Sandwich Board signs, the, it was, the temporary advertising is, I would say, a gray area, is kind of what we figured out. And so, we want to have something prescriptive in the bylaws that does allow this, and it's, you know, a very cost-effective way for the small businesses to be able to get their specials out and, you know, messages. So, we would like to be able to offer that by right, meaning no special permit. Next slide, please. Internally illuminated signs. So, I think what I've heard in the past is this has come to town meetings previously. I wasn't there for those, so I can't give you the history of those or what happened there, but what I can tell you is that a lot of people told me they were scared about internally-lit, backlit signs, and when I asked, did anybody show you what they meant? Did they show you any examples? They said no, which is, you know, we didn't want the center of Norfolk to look like the Las Vegas Strip, essentially, and so I was like, no, 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 we'll show you some examples of what we actually mean. And so, people tend to not be as bothered when you see that these are just, you know, small signs that would be on the building of a small business. The one on the left is similar to the one I showed you before, that protrudes more than twelve inches. It can be internally lit, and it's not allowed currently because it's internally lit and because it's protruding more than twelve inches. The one on the right would just be essentially if Exhale Dance wanted to have, you know, a backlit type of sign, or, you know, internally lit, just to show the letters through it. It's not anything crazy, it's not flashing, it's not animated, it's very tasteful. And so, we wanted to be able to offer that to the small businesses in our town that have been pleading for our help. Could there be bigger signs that are internally lit? Sure, but there's very limited space in this town where that could even make sense, given that everything is based on the, so for the size of the signs, there's standards, and if you were to have a building with ten thousand square feet, that's when you'd probably want a monument sign, and it would be lit, and it would probably be on one A, frankly, anyway, so I don't know that that would, this is not going to be in the residential district at all. It's only in the business districts. The last point, so these, aside from the Sandwich Board sign, the new signs that we're proposing here, especially the ones like, that are internally lit, since that is kind of a big fear for a lot of people in town, we would offer them by special permit, and we would review the designs at a meeting, at the planning board meeting. We meet once a month, wouldn't be, you know, we can even create a guideline for the small businesses to let them know what the process is. We already have a draft of what we would call a design guideline, so the businesses who want to have internally illuminated or a protruding sign, we will have the size and the materials and brightness, obviously, is something that we'll be concerned about. And we didn't want to have this as something that is just by right, because we think that it's going to take time to learn what is the appropriate brightness in the B-one district versus on one A. I would assume they will be very different. So, we want to work with the small businesses and figure this out with them before we make it standard across the board, so that we can make sure that everybody's comfortable with it, and that we have our standard criteria. So, we do have that design guideline document that we would have available for the small And if anyone has any questions, I will be right here to answer them.
Mr. Rosenberg.
Would this change anything with respect to political campaign signs?
No.
Nope.
Thank you.
Just business signs.
Sir.
David Axberg, one oh-six, Seacong Street. There is, in the town of Sharon, a, like, marquee sign in front of their town hall. Is the town proposing that? They did at one of the other meetings, and is that encompassed in this?
It could be offered. We talked about that a lot in our planning board.
When you say could be offered, could be offered under this bylaw?
Yes.
Or could be off, okay.
Yep, could be. So, it would be a different type of sign, potentially, more of a TV. It's actually in Rentham as well. There's two of them in Rentham. One of them is in front of the town hall, one is in front of the fire station in Sheldonville, so far away, just to get the messages out around the town. This would open up the opportunity for that, if the town wanted to do that, and those signs are extremely expensive, so also if the town could afford to do that.
Mr. Hadad.
Hi, Ed, one thirty-eight Red Maple Run. I live in the C-four district. It is a residential district. You made the comment that there is no residential here. So, the C-four is a residential, it's an over-fifty-five community. In that commercial building, we do have our businesses that face the residences, so I get concerned when I see all of these flashy things being crossed out, you know, down here, which I would not want to see in a sign, I guess is my first point. And secondly, do abutters get notified when a sign request for special permit is being brought before the planning board so that the abutters could have a say in that?
On the second one, yes. The second question, the first question.
And the first one, we actually, so there's still no flashing, no animation, there wouldn't be anything like that. It was crossed out there because we moved it to a separate section. Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Mr. Hadad. Mr. Garrity.
Rob Garrity, one twenty-three, Boardman Street. I was one of the two noes on the committee on this one, and my issue is actually the, frankly, the town marquee tombstone sign saying, buy Girl Scout cookies this month. And we say, no, it's not going to say, buy Girl Scout cookies this month. It's going to be only for important messages, which, please, it's not. It's going to be a sign, it'll be filled twenty-four hours a day with whatever kind of news is somebody wants to put out. But I was going to vote yes for this tonight, because I can't find for the life of me how the town would get a permit for that, because this schedule of sign use regulations says nothing about informational signs. It says, you know, if it's a freestanding sign on ground property owned by the town, you can advertise the name and purpose or function. That's it. You can't advertise town meeting tonight, you can't advertise your water bills are due. You know, I, maybe I'm forgetting how to read zoning and stuff, but I don't think that kind of informational sign is in here, and I just wanted to get that on the record because I don't frankly want to see one of those signs, you know, in front of town hall, because that's not, I think, what we wanted to do.
Well, thankfully, the town isn't proposing that, and I think the, if you get into the specifics of it, maybe, maybe we would come to that conclusion. I think when you say an internally-lit sign in a business district, that actually is covered.
The signs in the sign schedule are all very specifically.
Rob, so again, I don't want the back and forth. If you have a follow-up question, I'm happy to have you answered, I just don't want the back and forth. So, we'll see how that one goes.
We'll see how that one goes. It is not on the priority list at this time, it is really only for small businesses.
Mr. Garrity.
Mr. Moderator, we don't, with bylaws, see how things go.
Well, what I'm hearing is that there's a difference of opinion on what the bylaws say.
We have town council, and we have planning board, I don't know if we have zoning board.
I am so not putting town council on the spot to interpret what an application that's not before him is allowed or not allowed.
I do think it's pertinent to the issue.
I'm not going to ask Mr. Harrington to opine what a hypothetical future application's going to be, but if he wants to play sign guru, he is welcome to right now. He is waving me off. I think it's, I'm not trying to diminish the question, it is an important question. I think how that language is interpreted could come to bear, and maybe we'll see some clarification at a future town meeting. So, thank you, Rob, for bringing that up, and thank you, Melissa. Any other questions, comments, concerns on this particular zoning proposal? It requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
All right, so, I'm going to just do this standing, just two-thirds is two-thirds, so I just want to make sure we get it right. All those in favor, please stand. All those opposed, please stand. I think it pretty clearly has the two-thirds. I appreciate the discussion, so it passes by a two-thirds. Okay, Articles twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight are related. Here's what we're going to do on these. Mr. Bechkovsky is going to read the motion and give the advisory board's recommendation on twenty-six only. I am then going to allow the planning board to give a very brief presentation on all three, so that when there's some discussion, hopefully, we don't have to repeat that presentation on the others. Mr. Bechkovsky.
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article twenty-three as printed in the warrant.
Right. Mr. Bechkovsky.
Well, Article twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight are separate, so they are three parts of a single cover. It would not make sense, in this case, for the factors that are being put forward, to vote yes for some of them and no for others, so please consider them to be all of the type. This is an attempt to clarify the town bylaws, similar to what we've done in prior town meetings, to make it easier to understand and remove some inconsistencies that may exist when they sit in the current use tables. The goal would be to drive a single use table across the town bylaws that are easier to reference than to reference and, and inconsistent between them. Together, these three articles will simplify and clarify the use tables within the town bylaws. Article 26, in particular, that we'll talk about here first.
Moves the several use tables into a single location that is a single reference within the bylaws, and does not change any of the uses, uh, within the tables.
Thank you. Mr. Peck, on behalf of the planning board.
Chad Peck, chairman of the planning board. Thank you for the, the great introduction. Uh, so we do have the three articles, they are all interrelated. We did have a handout out there, if, hopefully you picked that up, if you did not, it's on the screen. Um, so the basics of this is Article 26 creates this table, this table does not exist right now, it creates this consolidated use table. It takes all the bits and pieces of, throughout the zoning bylaws, and puts it all in one use table as is. So we create the table. Then Article 26 cleans up the table. We, now that we've created the table, we're starting to see some inconsistencies and duplication. And so we, we have, sometimes we might have three or four, or even five, uh, references for the same exact thing. So it consolidates those into one. So Article 27 cleans up the table. Some of the other things it does to clean up the table is, we do have two zoning districts that have no land associated to them. So we're going to remove those. So that is the B2 and the C2 district, there's no land associated, there's no need for them on the table. Let's take them off the table, and if we do decide to reuse them, we'll be back here at a town meeting to discuss how they, how they get added to the table. Um, and finally, part of cleaning up, let's alphabetize the table, let's make it easy to read. So that's all part of Article 27. Finally, Article 28 fills in all the blanks. So everywhere there's a blank on the table, that means no, but let's just go ahead and say it means no. So there's no room for speculation. So the whole point of this is, let's make the table, let's clean it up, let's make it easy to read, let's remove the duplications and any contradictions with that.
Thank you, Mr. Peck, and obviously, the planning board recommendation for all three is favorable, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. Okay, questions, comments? We're going to do 26 first. You can see the description of 26, and then you can read all the, the language, if you like, in the article itself. Seeing no further comments, uh, requires a two-thirds vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? It clearly passes by two-thirds, if not unanimously.
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article 27 as printed in the warrant.
Seconded. So we've now, we've heard an explanation of what these are, we don't have to repeat it. Are there any questions? We have a description of what it does on the screen. Seeing no questions or comments. This also requires a two-thirds vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no? It passes unanimously.
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article 28 as printed in the warrant.
It's been moved and seconded, again, same deal, we've heard an explanation, we have an explanation on the screen that describes it. Seeing no questions, comments, requires a two-thirds vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no? It passes unanimously. Article 29, a general bylaw amendment for wetlands.
Mr. Moderator, I, I move to approve Article 29 as printed in the warrant.
Mr. Lutz.
Uh, this article would amend the town's wetlands bylaw to add the, a definition of maintenance work, uh, for public and private ways, so in other words, work that occurs on roadways that are either publicly held or privately held. Um, this brings us into line with the state maintenance activities definition, um, and so it's a streamlining effort in that sense. Um, it does require that the, although they, the app, the, the person doing the work does not have to apply for an order of conditions from the, uh, the Conservation Commission, they do have to provide notification to the Conservation Commission, so that the, the conservation agent or any member could go out and look at the work. Um, it also, uh, in the state law, it puts, uh, standard operating procedures, et cetera, around the kind of work that occurs, so.
And to be clear, this is added to the exceptions from the.
Yes.
From the, uh, wetlands bylaw. Okay. Questions? I, I assume this was presented by the Conservation Commission, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Questions, comments? This requires a simple majority vote, I see no questions at the mic, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no? And it passes unanimously as well. That is the last article for consideration, the Celtics are up nine at half. Um, can I have a motion to adjourn? Been moved and seconded, all those in favor? Fine, all opposed? We will see you at, in the fall. Thank you.